Was it kind of late? We do the same thing.
I know, like legal citations too.
Have a full boat.
Whatever. If you don't recheck it every time, maybe you're missing something.
Like it got reversed.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight and welcome you all to the February 22nd, 2016 City of Fayetteville Planning Commission Meeting. Please take this opportunity to turn your phones to silent, and if any member of the audience would like a listening device, staff has those and they can provide one for you and show you how to use them. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry.
Here.
Hoskins.
Here.
Chesser.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cook.
Present.
Hoffman.
Here.
Bunch.
Here.
Noble.
Here.
Selby. Thank you. We have a couple of items on our consent agenda this evening, the first being the approval of the minutes from the February 8th, 2016 meeting. Second is CCP 165314, concurrent flat southwest of Persimmon and Mountain Ranch Boulevards, Park Hill at Mountain Ranch. The third item is Admin 165341, administrative item for 344, North Highway 112 Fellowship Church. And would any member of the commission like to pull one of these for further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion made by Commissioner Cook to approve the consent agenda and a second by Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our first item of tonight is old business and its admin 165319, administrative item, UDC chapters 16, excuse me, 166172, 177 amendments. And Mr. Garner, would you please give us the staff report on that? Or is it you or is it Mr. Petty?
Both of us.
Okay.
This was presented at your previous planning commission meeting. The commission tabled it to allow more time for discussion in consideration of the proposal. I do not have anything additional to add in the staff report. I did meet in particular with Commissioner Brown. We sat down and worked through some things, hopefully. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Petty, do you have anything to add to that?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I bring it back to the commissioners. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I was ready to recommend that we forward this with the recommendation of approval last time. I'm going to make that motion now and then maybe people want to still discuss it some. So I move that we forward administrative item 16-5319 to the city council with the recommendation of approval.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion to forward this item made by Commissioner Chesser and a second made by Commissioner Brown. Mr. Garner? Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item is starting new business is LSD 165313, large scale development northeast of West Drake Street and North McConnell Avenue, Nelms Climbing Gym.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I will be too.
Okay. Will there be anyone left? Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The proposal is for development of a new indoor rock climbing center, just over 19,000 square feet in area and a parking lot to serve at that facility. The project is meeting all of the relevant development codes at this time, save for one. That would be the commercial design standards. The staff is recommending approval of this large scale development with some conditions. The first being a determination of the proposed street improvements on O'Connell. They're recommending street improvements as proposed by the applicant. That would include street lights, street trees, carbon gutter, the whole, the whole street section improvement all the way around as it turns over to, from Drake to McConnell. Number two, planning commission determination of proposed access easement that would allow future cross-access to the east. This is a code requirement and applicant has agreed to place an easement that in future would become at the applicant's expense when development occurs next door and it's deemed appropriate by this body would build that and connect and create that extra relief and access to the parking lot. Number three, subdivision, or excuse me, planning commission determination of a variance of the commercial design. Our commercial design standard for this building requires that, it's very specific, that a building must not be dominated by metal on the principal facade. The principal facade in this case is on Drake, on Drake Street. And if we could have an elevation, let me pass these around. These were provided this morning. Provided by the applicant to show their intent. Here's also a material sample board. It shows, I think, the exact profile, the color and material.
We'll share.
So the intent of the code is to prevent large blank metal surfaces on our, on our public street fronts. And in this case, staff finds in favor of the variance, we recommend approval. I mean, this building has been carefully designed. It's, it does have relief of that wall plane. It does also change materials, colors, and change some aspects of it that we believe meets the intent and the spirit of that code. However, it still does not meet the letter. So that's your determination to find if this doesn't, in fact, meet the intent and the spirit of the code. And finally, planning commission determination of multi-use trail improvements. There's city planning, fat trail, the future trail. How does that go?
Fable alternative.
Thank you. Fable alternative transportation plan says that we reserve future trail across the north of this site and also down the south. And so our trail coordinator is asking that we request dedication of multi-use trail easement. And the applicant is meeting that, meeting that requirement. So I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present? Please state your name for the record and tell us about your project.
My name is Dennis Nelms. And this is a business model I've been thinking about for about 20-plus years before I got in car business, came back. I've been climbing since 1990. And I think that this market has matured to the level that it could sustain this business and it needs to be of a regional pool. And proximity of the interstate is very crucial for this business model because of the volume of people. And the partners I brought in are currently, they've been operating gyms for 12 years. And this is going to be on the upper echelon of the climbing community. It's going to be well represented here in Northwest Arkansas. So do you have any specific questions about this project?
Not yet.
Okay.
If we do have any, we'll call you back up. Mr. Lack, did you have anything to add to that?
I would like to speak. I know that the commercial design standards are a particular determination that you'll make tonight. And we have approached this building with the idea of what is really appropriate for this building in, from a design sense, one, from a usage sense, in the size and scale and the type of structure that is best suited to span this, for this type of building. Certainly, we could seek to just cover that box with drive it and not seek a variance for it. But I think we can articulate with the metal a much better facade, a much better overall building. So when we look at the building overall and we think about, you know, when, from our office, when we think about what the design ordinance is for, and I was, I was in Fable. I was here when that ordinance was written. And I remember the discussions and I remember the desire not to create the metal buildings, the just stereotypical blank metal buildings. And that was a, a community decision that Fable made, which I agree with. I think that that's a, a good avenue. And, but, we also have the variance process because every law has to have a way for a variance within, to be able to do something creative that supersedes what was trying to be, what people tried to regulate. So we have looked at this building with, with the idea that we feel like it's appropriate that it be metal siding. I think there's a lot of precedence in the area as, as modern architecture proceeds through. We see more and more metal siding. Certainly, we try to vary that up. And here, we've, we've gone to a horizontal panel on the, on the more horizontal portion of the building. Hopefully, you guys can see the articulation of the horizontal pieces and then the vertical piece of the overall climbing gym. And so that, that does break that articulation down. We are working with welded corners so we don't have the clunky metal building trim on the corners. It's just a little more elegant detailing of the building. And we'd be happy to answer any questions on that, process any discussion. But that's, that's our feeling on that particular portion.
Okay. Thank you. Would you please state your name for the record? I know you.
Audie Lack.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Well, first I'll say I feel like this building, in terms of appearance, meets what I think of as the design regulations. I have a question for staff. I wonder if, simply saying, I wonder if this ordinance is a little too general. I'm sure it was written at a time when metal was not used as frequently by architects and designers as a principal facade. I don't know. Maybe, maybe this ordinance with a variance process works fine, but I strongly suspect that Quinn, for example, thought that this building was perfectly fine when he examined it for design code regulations, but for this ordinance. So, I don't know. Care to comment, Quinn?
I would say that that kind of decision is made by the city council, not by the planning commission or staff.
Not making a decision, I'm making a recommendation.
No, well, you asked him if it was time that, you know, we shouldn't have the metal or the, the part of the code that talks about this.
Yeah.
And that's not up for, you know, this particular ordinance is not before the city council, the planning commission for discussion or improvements or change. A project is.
I, I understand that.
And so.
I'm suggesting in this case that I think it might be considered.
Well, I think you can certainly consider what the staff has said, that a variance to the ordinance is appropriate. I think that that's proper for the staff to recommend variance and for you to consider it, but not the underlying utility and of the ordinance itself. That's not before the planning commission tonight.
I recognize that. As a planning commissioner, I am saying publicly that I think it should be considered. Other than that, I think I'm fine with staff's other recommendations. I'm sure there'll be other discussions. I just wanted to say I think this is a well-articulated building and looks great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
We saw this at subdivision committee and there were two issues at the time. One of them was the cross-connection to the adjacent property. And subdivision committee recommended that an easement be planted, but the cross-connection not be constructed so that it's, again, it's there if needed in the future, but, but remains as is if it's not needed. And I guess they got that worked out between subdivision committee and this meeting. Another thing that came up was, we spoke about more detail, we didn't have this kind of detail at subdivision level. As far as the flashings on the building, that kind of thing, the fenestration patterns or whatever, it was very difficult to tell from our black and white photos, or black and white pictures, excuse me, what the building was going to look like. And so the committee asked them to bring something to this meeting that would be more demonstrative of what they were actually going to build, and they've done that. And, and I'm probably one of the ones that are, that are more critical of metal buildings than just about anybody or whatever. And so, so anyway, I think they've done, I think they've done a good job and I'm going to support it.
Thank you. I feel that this building, you know, I, I really appreciate the articulation and the use of the metal on the outside, but the way that it's articulated is a little bit different. You've got the vertical and horizontal line. I think it, it works for me with the colors that are added, breaks it up enough that I'd be in support of it. I really think it's a nice-looking building.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I just had a question. When I look at the packet and I look at the south elevation in the packet along Drake Street, and I look at this sketch in front of the podium, it, they're different. I was wondering which is, which is ultimately going to be the correct view.
Okay. Yes. Let Mr. Lack answer that for you.
There are certainly always some minor fenestration changes that happen through the design process. The renderings that we send out early are very, very early in the design process. We have looked at eliminating the two garage doors that are shown on the elevations that were submitted in the original packet. We feel that this is the elevation that's appropriate at this time. Yes, sir.
In front of your podium?
Yes, sir.
That's ultimately going to be it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Actually, I have a question, not only for staff, but maybe for the commissioners on the subcommittee meeting. I know the administration is quite concerned about the traffic issues with Whole Foods about to open. I know that during the development process, we recommended they have another exit in this direction. And I guess my question is, do you feel like the access easements that this project is providing will be sufficient to handle an exit out of the Whole Foods parking lot in this direction? Have you all, are you happy with, with what has been proposed by the applicant? That's what I'm asking.
It's pretty far piece from Whole Foods.
Yeah, I think it's different.
I got on the wrong side. Okay, well, okay then.
But we could, we could ask them for it. I think they're going to, I think they're going to jax, but we can ask them.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I be able to just address cross-access on this a little bit?
Yes, please do.
From the planning staff perspective, we were concerned with the lack of cross-access from the first proposal. I think this corner here is a very busy corner on Highway 112. There is a signal and there's a gas station there and some other, you know, liquor store. We do feel like at some point in probably the fairly near future, that will turn over and be redeveloped. So we felt like the access easement the applicant's proposing would allow for future cross-access if it is appropriate at that time. So we, we feel like it's appropriate in terms of access and traffic management.
Well, that's a gas station, liquor store, so I think we're probably okay at this point.
Who else was on subdivision? Ron Autry? Okay.
I was on subdivision and Ron was.
Oh, okay. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think the two, the two issues were the cross-access and the, and the metal panels. At first, I was against cross-access currently, but I think with, with, you know, I think it needs to be there for the future. So I think the metal panels have been addressed well and I'll be in support of it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I move that we approve LSD 16-5313, determining in favor of staff's recommendation regarding street improvements and condition of approval number one, cross-access, and condition of approval number two. Determining that the elevations shown here tonight do meet the design standards as referenced in determination number three. And determination, determining in favor of the multi-use trail improvements mentioned in condition number four and otherwise agreeing with the other 10 conditions of approval.
Second. Okay. So we have a motion to, for approval of this large-scale development 165313 by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry. Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Our next item of business this evening is variance 165342, variance for 423 West Prairie Street, Prairie Street Apartments. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on this item?
Yes, thank you. The property is located at Prairie Street, 423 West Prairie. Very small, narrow lot. And property currently contains a concrete foundation and slab from a building that's been demolished. It's apparently quite old. The applicant has submitted a site improvement plan and that has been through our technical review. This variance is related to that SIP. The proposal is to develop a site with 10 multifamily units and commercial space on the first floor. As a part of that SIP, a couple of items have come up and the applicant would like to seek variances for two separate sections. The first is a variance of our downtown development overlay district glazing standards, which require for commercial, excuse me, for commercial use, 75% of that principal facade between two feet and 12 feet to be glazing and the remaining 25% to be, to be structure. The proposed elevations are not there. They're at 52%. Originally, I think maybe they were a bit lower, but applicant has been working with us to make sure we're working the right way, calculating them correctly. And we've discussed a few items. I think the applicant will tell you that given the amount of building and glass and the structural system that they hope to use, that they need a certain minimum of sheer panel in there in order to, to make that happen, particularly probably if you have two buildings, you know, two stories on top. Staff feels that in this case, because the glazing standards are intended to provide an easily legible elevation, easily legible facade that can tell you a little bit about what's happening inside that building and what the uses are intended to be, that because we're at 52%, it's not a commercial standard, it's our, our office standard. Offices, institutional uses are expected to be 50%. Residential's only required to be 40. So we're somewhere in between the 75% and the 40. And we feel that this is meeting our intent of this overlay district standard. And we recommend that you support the variance tonight. The second is an urban forestry variance, a landscape regulation that requires a landscape buffer between parking and the building, or parking and the sidewalk and the building and sidewalk. And I would prefer to let our urban forester explain that to you specifically, the, I guess, items two and three. So Derek, you want to talk about that?
Thanks, Quinn, just to address the, the two in your packet regarding urban forestry. The item labeled variance two is regarding design of the parking lot. When we look at section 164, excuse me, 17704D to B in landscape regulations, the historic interpretation of this section has been to allow, and we often see this where buildings are built within the build-two zone in these zoning districts. In the event that other features, other hardscape features such as parking or really just any hardscape elements, we typically recommend that the applicant provide a variance request for those so that, so that it can be determined that, that the hierarchy of the auto is not benefited in those situations. And so that's, that's what I've provided here with the number two and the number three. The number two is really regarding the slopes of the parking lot. So given the narrow dimension of this site, at the technical plat review, we asked the engineer of record to look at providing that typical green space buffer between the parking. It resulted in actually a slope beyond what the international fire code would, would approve and beyond ADA recommended standards. So staff is finding in favor of that variance request. And then under number three, again, due to the historic interpretation of, of the focus on buildings versus hardscape, we recommended a variance request there and finding that that patio in front of the building really is serving as an extension of the building, benefiting the pedestrian and not, not the auto, we're recommending approval of that request as well. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item. Sorry, I should have done that before.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
So I guess I would like to go ahead and finish up then with a, you know, letting you know, you know, we recommend approval of both of these with the following determinations. Those would be your conditions, but planning commission determination of variance of the architecture of glazing standards such as proposed by the applicant and as well as number two, the determination of variance of the UDC for landscape as described by the urban forester and proposed by the applicant with conditions of approval. Number one, that glazing facade proposal. Number one, that glazing facade proportion must not be reduced below the proposed 52%. So not limiting where they move them or how they want to shape those, but 52% is what the variance is for. And so we would ask you to approve that condition. And number two, that the approval of the landscape plan will, the landscape plan will be approved further during construction review. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Will the applicant please state your name for the record and tell us about your project?
Sure. My name is Matt Pettie. I'm the applicant and the developer of this project. I think it's time to review this variance. I won't say too much because, you know, I think staff covered most of our rationale. I will say on the green space variance, in particular with regard to the ADA space, we tried everything we could to make that work. And we really do feel like what we're proposing is the best from an ADA standpoint. We may still have to grade beyond the parcel boundaries with what we're showing, but we know that if we shift the ADA space south, we'd have to grade much more than what we hope to do. And so it's really about the incline of the wheelchair route, which would, if we move the space, force people into the sidewalk, in addition to make them climb an 8% grade. The glazing is really the big thing for us. Towards the end of the packet, you'll see the original elevations that we proposed, which was calculated at 37% glaze. We actually think that meets the intent of the ordinance as well. I think it's obviously commercial in nature. When we realized that we were not meeting the codified requirements, we bumped that up as much as we could and now we're at 52%. You know, frankly, this is all driven by a need to stay within wood framing. If we were to meet the requirement, what we'd need to do is on either side of that central entry, we would need to have 38 feet of continuous glass on either side and that forces us to go to structural millions, which means we need to bring another trade on the site. And frankly, we just don't have the rental market in Fayetteville that will support steel structures. There's no way to get a project done like that in the rental market of Fayetteville. The rents just aren't there. We need to stay with wood framing. And that means we need 12 feet to provide bracing. We need space for shear walls. And so 52% is really pushing the limits of what we can get if we're going to stick with wood framing. I think with regards to the context and the rest of the downtown master plan area, you'll see that even this 52% benchmark is well in excess of what we see throughout the rest of the downtown zone. You know, we might be able to meet that requirement if this were a deep and narrow site because it's trivial for us to span a 20-foot or even a 24-foot wide space. Because this site is so shallow, we're forced to orient the street in a different direction that might be typical. And so that space there on either side of the entryway is about 47 feet across facing the street and it just forces us to approach the glazing in a different way than we would if it were a narrow and deep site. So we're thankful you're considering this. I will say too, if you have comments about this requirement, in general speaking, as a council member, I think I'm happy to hear those. I think the other council members are always happy to hear your comments on the code. You know, we come to you often to ask for your comments on new codes that haven't been implemented yet and we rely on your statements and your precedents with regards to existing codes to establish support for changing those. So personally, and if I'm wearing that hat, I'd ask you to please make your opinions known if you have them. Without taking any questions about the project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone, any member of the public that wants to talk about this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen. Seeing if you're awake. Yeah, we are. Take it all in.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I'm just kind of, I think out loud here for a second, in terms of the way that urban design affects walkability or the pedestrian experience, which I think is, even if it's not explicitly stated, at least implied as a principal goal of City Plan 2030, I think that the spirit and intent of something like, you know, an 80% glazing requirement is completely appropriate. However, when looking at this elevation, I personally find that it conforms with the spirit and intent of a requirement like that, specifically because, you know, just in terms of what's actually happening when a pedestrian is walking down an urban street, the reason that you would want, and I think Quinn kind of touched on this, but the reason that you would want permeability, at least visible permeability in a facade is that people like to kind of project themselves into spaces. It's kind of a mental trick that they do when you're walking down the street. You know, you're looking at buildings, you can imagine yourself looking up into, you know, the storefront on Champs-Elysees or whatever. You like to see human interaction, you like to see programmatic activity. Is this a store? Is it a, you know, what kind of place is it? So for me, it's not so much a, personally, it's not so much about, you know, what exact percentage is it? Is it, it's more a question of, do I believe that that sort of mental exercise can take place? And in this case, I absolutely do. So I'm going to find in favor of this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Things up. Alderman Pettie opened up the door for discussion on this. While I appreciate the codes, the, as far as the percentage of glazing and everything else, I have a little bit of a different opinion. I don't think that everybody wants 80% glazing on the first floor of their building. And I think that there are a lot of cases where it's very, very appropriate and there's a lot of cases where it's totally inappropriate. And so I'm glad we have the variance route to be able to approve things like this. I think that a lot of times we implement too much regulation and we end up stifling design. And so anyhow, I think, I know you've got to start somewhere. I understand that. You've got to have something to begin with or what have you. I think that a lot of it has to do with the location of the building and the buildings around it or what have you, but we don't know that every time somebody brings a, brings a project through. And so to have a blanket, well, we want to have 80% glazing or what have you and so much opacity or what have you, I think it's a bad idea. And so I would actually like to see us give our code a little bit more flexibility because again, I think it stifles design. I think it drives everything in one particular design direction and I don't think that's good for architecture. So that's it. But I'm perfectly fine with your project. Good job.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Interesting. I just want to respond real quick to Commissioner Hoffman's comments. As a member of the design community, I happen to be a member or representative of a profession that has unfortunately ruined countless downtown streets in downtowns across America with well-designed projects that basically put, you know, blank concrete walls or blank, you know, 50, 410 metal walls. I mean, choose your, choose your, you know, architectural record of the week in terms of what kind of junk architects have come up with. You know, I'm all for design and I think that the variance process allows articulate spokesmen to come in here and make the case that they've done something that's in the city's best interest. But in terms of setting a bar for what we need as a city, I think it's really important to do things that, you know, sort of objectively are good for furthering the goals of the city of Fayetteville. And again, in my mind, that includes ground floor transparency, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Cook.
You guys are getting away too philosophical for me personally, but I mean, I'm looking at these variances and based on this, what I see in this location, I mean, I don't have any issue with either one of these variances personally. I think you just mentioned it in your comments, that sometimes it's about the building and the place it's located. And that's kind of the way I see this building, so I'm certainly supportive of it. I'm going to make a motion, in fact, to approve variance 16-5342.
Second? Second?
Okay. So we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Cook and a second by Commissioner Hoffman. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is CUP 165306, conditional use for 113 and 115 West Isla Street, Anderson. Mr. Fulter, would you please give us the staff report on that?
Madam Chair, this is an existing duplex located at the southwest corner of Wilson Park and Isla Street. It was constructed legally in 1950, I will say 1956 is what the courthouse records say. At that time, it appears that a duplex in a single-family home both would have been a legal use unit in this area. There was a much different zoning code in the 1950s than we have today. It was actually about 1972 when the zoning code was completely overhauled and most of these areas became only single-family use being allowed by rights. So even though the duplex was constructed legally in the 1950s, when the zoning code was redone in the 1970s, it became a non-conforming use, which is fine under our code on non-conforming use as it can remain and it has remained and has remained with the current owner for about 22 years now. The issue comes up with if it's ever destroyed by natural causes, by a fire, tornado, something like that. At that point, they are not allowed to rebuild that structure. And again, that is something that isn't always an issue. In the case here, we have an applicant that is trying to get a new mortgage on this home. And the question we often get, and I'm sure some of you are familiar with this, is these companies call the city and they say, Ken, is this a conforming use? Can they rebuild it? Should something happen to our investment? And our answer is no, which is not a good answer for them. And so the homeowners' course here is to come before the planning commission and request the conditional use to make this a conforming use, again, within the RSF4 zoning district. And that's what your conditional use approval would do tonight. We are recommending approval of this. This is an existing use. It's been part of the Wilson Park neighborhood for about 50 years. It's a very consistent style with many of the other ranch-style homes in this area. In fact, if you look at the other ranch-style homes on the street, you wouldn't actually realize which one was a duplex unless you really looked for those doors. It's a very compatible style of home or duplex within this neighborhood. And so it is a good use here and we are recommending approval of the conditional use. The first item is just planning commission determination of compatibility, which we find in favor of. Items two and three are really about if this thing's ever destroyed, what we wouldn't want to see is a duplex that was completely out of scale and character with the neighborhood. So it's really kind of a design comment about Wilson Park and fitting in with that existing scale of the neighboring homes. Nothing more than that with items two and three. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Would you please come up if you have anything to add, you know, state your name for the record and...
Barbara Anderson.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to what Mr. Fulter just said?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Do you have anything to add to what?
No, I didn't. I've, you know, included a letter with my application and I think that explains, you know, why I need to have this brought up to co with the zoning.
Okay. Thank you very much and we'll, if we have any questions for you, we'll call you back up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any member of the public that wants to discuss this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
My only question is, you know what I'm going to ask, don't you? Why not board of adjustment? Because it needs to be a CUP?
Yeah, it's just, it's a duplex is a conditional use in the...
Okay, and so board of adjustment can't do that?
That's right.
Okay. I would be ready to motion, in fact, I'm just going to make the motion if people want to discuss it, they can. I think staff's correct. I've counted 60 years that it's been there. I move that we approve CUP 16-5306. Let's see, and there are findings, I guess, Jesse, or no?
Determination of compatibility.
Determining in favor of compatibility as listed in condition of approval number one, but I don't need to do determinations for the rest.
No, sir.
Otherwise, finding an agreement with staff's conditions of approval number two and three. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Commissioner Chesser, a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Anderson. Okay, our next item is CUP, conditional use, one, excuse me, 165305 for 1640 South Hanshu Road, Lindsay. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on that item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Should we acknowledge that in any way, Andrew?
Sorry.
Should we acknowledge that in any way, that that was perhaps Mr. Fulter's final report?
What?
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 Come back here.
Wait, 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 what's going on? Wait, wait, wait. Come, come.
What's going on?
What's going on? Is there something we should know?
Well, I was joking with Quinn that I, we weren't going to do this, but yeah.
You started it.
I put in my two weeks with the city and moving to another job here in Fayetteville and I was joking with Quinn that that was my last staff report and it should have been a harder one.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
We have to decide if we're going to accept your explanation or not.
Well, you can vote on that at the end of the meeting.
We're not going to...
We bet on that now?
Well, where are you going?
I move that we do not accept. Well, you're going to still be here in town, though.
Yes, I'm still going to be in town and I'm sure you'll send me...
Private sector?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You've done an exceptional job.
Well, thank you very much. I'll send you an email and I'm sure I'll see you.
Well, let us know where you are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I hate to hear that. Okay. Thank you very, thanks for letting us know that, Mr. Thompson.
You're very welcome. I'm not sure he'll thank me for that.
Yeah, probably not.
The subject property is located at 1640 Hanshu Road. If you're not familiar with that, it's pretty far out towards Farmington on Highway 62.
Damn, yeah.
The property is 2.9 acres, so just under three acres, in the RSF4 zoning district. And I think ultimately that may be what, why we're here tonight. But the property is developed with an older home built in 1951, 1,100 square feet and unusually has six additional or accessory buildings and those total approximately 8,686 square feet. So quite a large amount of accessory building out here. These structures, it looks like they've been out there for a long time, probably when this land was in agricultural use, which it has been out that way for most of its, most of its life. The property is, surrounding is, there are large tracts of wooded and undeveloped property. And this is actually one of the smaller of those. So the request tonight is approval to construct an accessory building with a footprint of approximately 2,100 square feet. That will be used to store a small vintage car collection that the applicant has and some equipment. What the applicant is proposing to do is to remove that current, where the location of the current collection, I should say, is in a large former chicken house, which is falling apart and in poor repair. And applicant would like to build this building in order to store his cars and his tools in and remove that, that building. So as you know, chapter four, or excuse me, 164 permits accessory structures, limiting the area to no more than 50% of the size of that principal residence. And this is far in excess of that just by itself. It's double, you know, not even considering the other buildings. However, the reason that we have that code is to prevent people from doing large accessory building shops, turning something into commercial use perhaps within typical residential neighborhood settings. So acreage of, you know, a third, quarter or a third of an acre, something like that. Warehouses may be larger and then building large shops on lots that may affect neighbors. And out here, staff doesn't think this is inappropriate. In fact, we don't see any, any conflict that could, that could, with any neighbors that could happen as a result of constructing this and certainly not from removing a dangerous and dilapidated former agricultural building. So we are recommending... So we are recommending, in favor of this conditional use with the following conditions. That Planning Commission determine compatibility of the property. And again, staff feels like this is perfectly compatible. In fact, the nearest residence appears to be about 1,000 feet away. That's, you know, a long way. So, and number two, the chicken house shall be completely removed before certificate of occupancy if that shop building is, is given. So a little control there that we get that chicken house actually pulled down. And number three, a neighbor suggested this series of conditions. And I'm not sure, I think we discussed these at agenda briefly. I'm not sure which one of these, if any, we can, we can recommend. But I'll let perhaps the city attorney fill you in on that. Those were, and we felt like these were reasonable in a sense that demolition of the chicken house not involve any burning. Turns out that's an illegal activity anyway. That debris from this demolition not be placed at any time across property boundaries. Again, private property issue. And C especially that prior to the certificate of occupancy, the applicant should remove a driveway that crosses property boundaries onto this, onto this adjacent landowner's property. That that should be removed prior to the certificate of occupancy, I suppose. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much. While we're talking about this, Kit, would you like to address what Mr. Thompson just said about the items that the neighbor was asking for?
Well, they all seem like real nice items that probably should be done. But normally, and I hopefully uniformly, the city does not get involved within two property owners if they have a little dispute about the placement of a driveway or, or other things such as that. And therefore, I think it would be inappropriate for us to adopt as conditions that a property owner must move a driveway. There could be arguments of adverse possession or whatever that we don't know anything about and we're not proper to make the decision on who's right between property owners. They have courts for that. And so that's my concern. Obviously, we have regulations about burning, about what can be burned. And construction debris cannot be burned in the city of Fayetteville. That goes without saying, or maybe, goes without making it as a condition, I guess I should say. And of course, littering on your neighbor's property is not allowed. That's again, a trespass on somebody else's property and can be, in fact, even prosecuted as well as having the property owner go to court for trespass action where they can receive damages. I would just caution you, as I have before, when there's been disputes about restrictive covenants, that we are not a court to make these kinds of decisions. That's what the courts are for in disputes among private landowners. And so I would just not recommend in favor of, of condition number three. And we would ask everybody to be good neighbors, but I think beyond that, we should probably not go more.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you the applicant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
My name is William Lindsay.
Do you have anything to add to this?
I talked to the owner of the property adjacent to mine earlier today. We, the, the survey wasn't correct. We walked off the property line. It isn't on her property and she is totally okay with it. Her name is Barbara and she said if anyone would like to call her, she will verify that.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Ben. If you have anything else to add or if we have any other questions for you, we'll call you back up.
I just wanna know, he made a much better argument than I did because as you can see, we don't really know the facts when somebody complains.
We don't usually have something like this show up on a, on a conditional use item. Is there any member of the public that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
This all seems reasonable to me. We've had situations like this come up before where people want an accessory structure, larger, but there's a kind of special use situation, like a large amount of land, kind of out in the country. So I don't see anything, any problem with this. Therefore, I'm gonna move that we approve CUP 16-5305, striking recommendation of approval number three, but otherwise agreeing with items number one and two in that list.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Hoffman?
I just have quick questions for Mr. Thompson. It sounds like what you're, what you're kind of saying in a way is that RSF4 just isn't really appropriate for this property, like it, like it doesn't really conform to the, what we think typically of as an RSF4 area. And I'm wondering if, I mean, is there, I'm not, not suggesting that we should rezone this or that, obviously that's not even up for question tonight. But just given the fact that this is a conditional use, is there another zoning district like RA that where this would not be a conditional use? Because, I mean, I, you see properties like this all the time, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can maybe address that.
Yeah.
If a property is zoned residential-agricultural where you can have agricultural and animal husbandry as a primary use, you do not have to do a conditional use permit for a large barn or accessory structures. But this one, because it is zoned residential, single-family only, that's where the requirement comes into play.
Oh, it's, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion on, before us, made by Commissioner Chesser with a second by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And our next, thank you very much, Mr. Lindsay. Our next item is CUP 165318, conditional use for 346 North Ralston Avenue, The Sporn Company. I think that's, I pronounced that right. Mr. Thompson, would you please give us the staff report on that?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So this property contains a single-family home on just under a quarter acre in addition to some accessory dwellings. I'm not entirely sure of the entire layout, but I believe that the single-family home has a first-floor apartment, a second, or a second floor has two apartments in it as well as an accessory building that is a third apartment perhaps even that faces the alley or, excuse me, Thompson Avenue, which is a lot like an alley. The house is 1,722 square feet, built in 1892. So this is among actually Fayetteville's oldest and densest neighborhoods. It's also right downtown, a block or two off Dixon Street. The applicant is here tonight because, making this request because of a business license application that we got. We realized that this use is not allowed in the NC zone and that a conditional use can be required. I think the applicant's business has likely been there for several months. I'm going to say half a year or more before we realized this was the case. And we've been in discussion about how to, how to bring this forward since then. We have received a little bit of public, I guess we can call it comments and question about it, but I haven't registered any, any comments. I think we may have some tonight. So this is a, it's been a, a little bit of a tricky, a tricky conditional use. It is a very much an established neighborhood. There's a very intense use on this property. The back part of it is, is well-parked, I suppose. There's the, almost entirely gravel across the back. Well, you can see it there in the, in the Google Earth. You know, at the same time, it is purely residential neighborhood. It is an NC neighborhood conservation and we don't see a lot of business use in there. This business will have three full-time employees. Presumably, all three of those are parking on this site in addition to two other apartments in the house and then an extra one. So I traveled by a couple of times to see, you know, in the evening and then in the day during the week to see if parking was a problem. There are some pictures included in there. I never, never saw any issue at all. It didn't seem very, much of a concern. Of course, I don't know if all of those apartments are empty at this time or if they're full. So there's a lot that is hard to judge. But in terms of compatibility, so that was difficult for us. Down here, it's also, of course, right there in our, in our entertainment district as well. So, you know, there's a wide variety of uses, you know, right around this thing. They've also been there, again, without complaint for a number of months. And so that really, in the end, on balance, kind of being on the fence on this, on balance, that made me think, well, let's, let's recommend in favor of this. And apparently it has, compatibility has not been a problem. And, and go from there. So that's, that's what we're recommending. We do have some concerns about egress and ingress, but largely those appear to, well, this thing has been gravelled for a number of years. It has been used in this, in this intense way residentially. And it seemed that an office use during the daytime may fit in well with that. There won't be a lot of, not, everybody won't be packed in there at night. So it may actually, in some sense, could be beneficial to the overall parking of the site. So with those, you know, kind of very finely considered, I guess, options, and again, this wasn't an obvious, an obvious recommendation for me. But I did ultimately find that would recommend approval for this conditional use based on that, those, those concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the applicant present?
Richard Goodrum?
I'm Brittany Wild, the applicant.
Do you have anything to add to what staff has already said?
Just about the ingress or egress, we just...
Speaking to the microphone, please.
Sorry. We do use the gravel parking lot in the back. We park all three of our cars in the back and we are only there Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 5:00. The tenants, the tenant in the back part C parks his car in front there and then the two above tenants do park on the street. They have tags to park on the street. When we're not there in the evenings and weekends, those tenants are allowed to park in the gravel spot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's a really quiet operation. We're just a branch pet product company out of a, a company home-based in New York City. It's just three of us doing product development, customer service sales, really quiet. We don't intend on putting a sign out front and we get along with all the neighbors and our upstairs tenants. So it's really quiet. I just wanted a kind of a home-based feel for the office. We moved in last spring and I go to a lot of professional appointments around downtown Fayetteville, doctors and whatnot, and it's really comfortable. And so for a quiet business, I think should be pretty acceptable.
Thank you, guys. If we have any questions, we'll bring you back up. Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item?
Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the commission. My name's Stephen Smith. I live next door to this property at 340 North Ralston. Let me say that I don't have any complaints against the business and they've been good neighbors in the time that they've been operating there. I do have some questions about the nature of the variance and what it might mean for the neighborhood. When we bought our home there 21 years ago, there were 10 single-family residences on that block. One of them was converted to a duplex. But this particular property at 346 has gone from a single-family residence to four rental units. They also have, according to the city, two parking permits and four hang tags issued to that address. So that's six potential parking permits. And there are only seven parking spaces on Ralston Street in that block. So our question, I guess, is if the business were to expand, want to add additional employees, what does that mean for parking in the area? Would that be covered by the, by the variance that's being sought tonight? Also, I, I thought the, Mr. Thompson's report on signage was somewhat ambiguous, but the applicant says they don't intend to have any signage there. So I assume that would require a separate permit if they wanted to do some kind of commercial sign. But my question, I guess, is does this variance stay on that property forever? If a new business comes in with a different nature or do they have to apply for a new variance? Or if this business expands, what does that do to the parking in the neighborhood? Those are just questions we have. Like I said, I have no complaints about the operation now. I think Mr. Thompson was fortunate that he came by when parking was available on that block. That's not always the case. On Friday, there was no parking on that block, no parking on Watson, no parking on Thompson. There was parking on Lafayette. But that's, that's a concern about what happens in the future.
We'll try and address your questions and get some answers for you.
Great. May I sit down now?
You sure can. You, your excuse. Is there any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners. Mr. Thompson, would you, or you or Mr. Garner, please?
Sure.
Kind of address Mr. Smith's concerns about, you know, does this go with the property indefinitely? And parking and those sorts of things?
In fact, the conditional use does travel with the property. It's not just for this applicant. However, the, any expansion of this business would bring the applicant back here for, for another hearing to, if they wanted to add one more person, for instance, in there. They've, they said we have three people and they have limited their hours of operation. And you find that in the conditions of approval. So the applicant, or the, and I guess I could have been clearer about the, about the number of, of employees. But the assumption is that, and that's our standard practice, that when, when an applicant seeks a conditional use, that you limit all of those details that you find relevant to maintain compatibility in the neighborhood. And that could be, well, it could be anything, but in this case, you know, number of employees, number of parking, you know, amount of parking, out of business hours, those sorts of things are certainly appropriate.
Madam Chair, I might add on to that as well. If you can see on page two of 14 in your staff report, condition of approval number one states that the existing home can be used as an office and teaching space for The Sporn Company, parentheses, yuppie puppy. So that's the first determination. So I, I think it probably would be limited to this exact business as proposed. If they, it couldn't move in and out, it couldn't have a real, a real estate office there or things like that. So it's, I think it probably would be limited to exactly this company. If they wanted to change or they wanted to open up a different business out of here, they would have to come back to the commission. And again, condition of approval number one states that the business shall be limited to the size and operation as proposed by the applicant. And so that's where they listed the number of employees, which is three. So if you're looking in the future, the, the neighbor's concerns about, you know, can this change or be expanded? The answer is not without Planning Commission approval. And could this be transitioned to a different business? And I think it would not be able to.
Another part of their letter says, no customers or visitors. I wonder with the applicant saying they don't want to sign, whether that might be a condition of approval as opposed to just signs as accordance to the, the normal regulations. I, you wouldn't have a problem if we just said no signs, is that right? Okay, he indicated no. He would not have a problem.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Autry?
This seems pretty straightforward. And since they've been there, I think the gentleman said since last spring, several months, it's pretty obvious they're pretty good neighbors in the area, everyone concerned. I think the conditions of approval here have addressed Mr. Smith's concerns. And, yeah, parking on... parking on all of those streets, Ralston, every one of them is difficult at best. So, but considering they're there from set hours and not there on the weekend, it does open up a couple of other spots during the weekend. So, seem like they've been good neighbors, and they're just trying to do the right thing by getting their city affordable business license. So, I don't want to have an issue with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
I was on the Board of Adjustments. We had this, it's pretty common for people to come in and ask for forgiveness rather than for permission. So I, in this case, I certainly want to, I wouldn't want to set any sort of precedent for allowing people to audition conditional uses for any amount of time before coming in and actually officially asking for them. But having said that, I'm fine. I think that this works kind of on its own merits, and I'm going to support it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I generally agree with the other comments made. It sounds like a, it sounds to me like actually there will be a less intense use of this building than if people live there, is my suspicion, because they're not there on the weekends and at night. So, given that they don't have any walk-in clientele or anything, I think this is fine. I feel like the neighbor's concerns have been addressed, with the exception of, when I make my motion, I'm going to agree with counsel about signs, which I'm going to do now. I'm going to move that we approve CUP 16-5318, striking conditional approval number four and replacing it with, signs shall not be allowed on the property. Does that work, counsel?
And I would say pursuant to the agreement of the applicant.
Pursuant to agreement of the applicant. Finding, in agreement with, sorry. I'm going to just make a note that staff write, wrote that, quote, "Staff recommends approval of the request, finding that the proposed use is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood." I suspect they meant compatible. So, striking in, in incompatible. Agreeing with staff's finding in number one, and otherwise agreeing with the other three conditions of approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve this item by Commissioner Chesser and a second by Commissioner Cook. Mr. Garner, will you please call the roll?
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our, let's see. Our next item is rezone 165310 for 1564 East Huntsville Road, Zweig Properties. Mr. Thompson, would you give us the staff report on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The property is a point four, eight, 46 acre parcel. It's located on the northeast corner of Sherman Avenue and Huntsville Road. It's currently zoned to RSF4. However, this property has been developed with a concrete building, just under 7,000 square feet, for a number of years. According to county assessor, that building was built in 1965. So it's been a concrete building with a lot of commercial, or a lot of overhead doors since the mid 60s. The applicant requests rezoning this property from RSF4 residential, single-family to CS, Community Services, in order to bring this building and the historic uses that have gone along with that into compliance with the zoning code. This is a residential neighborhood area, so everything north of Huntsville Road here is planned in the future to be residential in nature largely. However, I just want to point out, because we don't highlight this very often, that this designation also does encourage traditional neighborhood development, including low-intensity non-residential uses such as this one, and is intended to serve surrounding neighborhoods, actually retail offices, and these are usually expected on corners and intersecting or, excuse me, connecting corridors. I think that describes this property perfectly. So as far as land use compatibility, we feel that it does meet that residential neighborhood designation, even though at first glance you may think it wouldn't. Again, the building's been there since 1965. It's been used by the, apparently the Pearson family, built by them in that time, and then certainly in recent memory been used as a U-Haul location, pickup, drop-off for U-Hauls, as a pawn shop, and a few other commercial businesses like that. So, again, we feel therefore, you know, it's compatible with the neighborhood. It's, most of that neighborhood was built at that time or later. The land use analysis, and this is again, the compatibility, you know, our city plan does hope to promote dense development around appropriate intersection and corridors, mode of development. We feel that that's certainly the case here. We do have a larger commercial and institutional node to the east with churches and a lot of offices, about to be the gas station there perhaps one day. So it does seem compatible and fitting our land use, so we're recommending in favor of this, in part because the site is very small. Also, I'd like to note that less than half acre should not give you too much pause about rezoning this to CS. Larger acreage has been, I've questioned that in the past, recent past. This is a solid building, 7,000 square feet on a half acre lot, and the applicant would just like to be able to use that for a wider variety legally of business. We're recommending in favor again, and I'll be glad to defend that position if I can.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good evening. My name is Alan Reed, and I will be here to represent Mr. Mark Zweig on this rezoning petition. We pretty much agree with everything that Quinn has briefed you on. Again, this was a building that was put up in 65. It's probably been used for 20 different uses, and I think rather than coming back for conditional uses, Mr. Zweig would like us to get it in this commercial state to where he has a more variety, a little more flexibility in what he can do with the property. And I think he also believes that maybe Huntsville Road, it might be going through some type of changes, and it might be compatible with what we see in the future along that corridor.
Okay. Thank you. If we have anything else, we'll call you back up. Is there any member of the public that would like to discuss this item? Please state your name for the record.
My name's Richard Austin. I live in the property next door to 1564. I've lived there for 30 years. I've watched the changes that have occurred in the building. I really don't have a problem other than whatever happens in that building directly affects my property. We are so close. We've granted them an easement for an extension of the roof, which now houses approximately 10 to 20 squirrel.
What? It is residential.
My dog really doesn't like that. Anyway, the runoff from that building has been addressed. Everything that comes down that mountain does end up basically on my property. There's a huge drainage issue with it. I would just caution, whatever the usage is, or if they're intending to sell the property, it does affect all of us who live there on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, I close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, this is another interesting one. I think a lot like the one that we saw at the last meeting. This sort of exposes a gap that we have in our zoning code between neighborhood services and community services. I would hope that, you know, at least some of us would agree that if this were, as Mr. Thompson mentioned, a much larger parcel, that community services might be a little bit heavy for it. And, you know, because it's not, because we're only looking at point 46 acres, I think that, you know, I'm going to be fine to support it. But as I mentioned, you know, I think that it's only because of the fact that I know, or a fact that you can't build a come and go on point 46 acres, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Brown.
I was wanting to ask staff if, in your discussions with the applicant, did you discuss the differences between the NC and the neighborhood services versus neighborhood commercial zones?
Community services.
Or community services, excuse me.
You know, Mr. Brown, I didn't have any conversation with the applicant.
Okay.
I would like to add that the neighborhood services zoning district, the buildings are capped out at a maximum of 3,000 square feet, so it would automatically make this building non-conforming.
Oh, okay.
So that was, I think, what we've talked about in some of these other zoning's, that there may be an option to create another zoning district in between the 3,000 square feet and the 25,000 square feet that this zoning would allow potentially. But I think from staff's perspective, because, you know, the size of the parcel is so small, you would not be able to build a building that would be that size. It would be a problem for the neighborhood, in our opinion.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
I think that given the historic nature of the use here, rather than asking the applicant to continue to come back for conditional uses, that this is a reasonable request, especially given the tightness of the site. Therefore, I'm going to move that we forward rezone 16-5310 to the city council with the recommendation of approval.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to forward this item to the city council with a recommendation for approval made by Commissioner Chesser, a second made by Commissioner Selby. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry.
Yes.
Hoskins.
Yes.
Chesser.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bunch.
Yes.
Noble.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, our next item this evening is admin, excuse me, 165340, which is UDC Chapter 164.19 Amendments. Mr. Garner, would you please give us the staff report on it?
Ma'am, this was an item that was brought to our attention from Alderman Matthew Petty in his meetings with city staff. One of the, he recognized some issues in our accessory dwelling unit ordinances that he wanted to change. And in looking at this further, staff also had some additional things to add to this, some clarification and things like that, that we have seen over the years that we felt like needed to be addressed. And the primary changes, I think, before the commission, we have them highlighted here, and also I've had some explanation here in your staff report. So, the primary three items being addressed are removing the minimum lot size for accessory dwelling units. The second issue is removing the requirement for separate water and sewer connections for accessory dwelling units. And then thirdly, removing the registration requirement where property owners by our codes now are required to register their accessory dwelling units every year with a planning division. And if you want more background on why some of these issues were put into the code, I'll be happy to provide that to you, but with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Petty, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, I'd just say, you know, I think Fayetteville should be very grateful that we have one of these ordinances at all. I mean, accessory dwelling units, I think, are one of the first, the first mechanism cities should adopt to encourage infill and complete neighborhoods. Now, the ordinance we have right now has created several non-conforming accessory units, and it's also made it impossible to build accessory units on many of the lots in our historic district and even elsewhere in the community, even though there might be identical lots which have existing non-conforming ADUs on their property. So I think this is really a recalibration of the code we have pursuant to the neighborhoods that are already on the ground. Whenever I first approached staff, the only thing I wanted to do was remove the minimum lot size so that we could bring those lots into conformance and let the underlying zoning designations rule that decision. That said, I'm fully in support of all the changes that have been proposed by staff. I think they're smart changes. I think they'll encourage the adoption of accessory dwelling units. In a few cases, if you're willing, I might even go farther, so long as it doesn't go so far to, that staff would withdraw their support. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have or any speculation you might have about additional changes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Well, if we're going to do this while we're at it, I'd like to see about changing the minimum square footage number. And I don't, as far as bedrooms go, maybe even change that, too. Six hundred, like we said, and we were talking about in, in the agenda the other day, 600 square feet ain't much. I'd like to see that closer to 900 or 1,000 square feet, but...
Sure. Madam Chair.
Before we, is there anybody in the public that would like to discuss this item? There's not any public comment, I don't think, but I just wanted to make sure we covered that base. So, seeing none, now we're back to the commissioners. Commissioner Hoffman.
Yeah, just to respond to Commissioner Hoskins, I agree. I think that we need to take another look at the 600 square foot number. I've actually attempted to design a few of these over the last four or five years, and it's, it does get very difficult to fit sort of what a contemporary client wants out of one of these types of spaces into 600 square feet. I'd also point out that, just, you know, I think I've spoken to this before. One of my favorite cities in the country really is Charleston. Charleston has a lot of these types of places. If you walk around down there, there's a lot of carriage houses. Some of the best, coolest places that I would want to live, and I think a lot of people would want to live, are those carriage houses, and many of them are far more than 600 square feet. And so I wonder if maybe another approach might be, maybe in addition to raising the square footage, looking at a max square footage for footprint, you know, recognizing that people could go two stories, and that, you know, if it was a 600 square foot footprint, they could end up with a 1,200 square foot dwelling in their backyard, which we're essentially already admitting to when we talk about the garage. We're just saying that, you know, the lower level has to be for cars instead of people, which I think is a little bit discriminatory, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Petty.
I would personally, at least in theory, and notwithstanding staff's comments, be in favor of striking the paragraph in question entirely. If you consider, for instance, that the minimum size for a three-car garage is about 864 square feet, being 24 feet in depth and 36 feet in width, it's clear that the current standard is too small. I also think that the restriction for one bedroom is, well frankly, it's silly. You know, I can put any number of rooms in a dwelling, and anyone that doesn't have a closet, I don't have to call a bedroom, at least whenever I file the permit, and everybody out there who's building these things knows that. So I think that that is a token sentence in the code that was really put there, just in anticipation of political risk whenever this ordinance was first written. I think if you are weary of not having any limitation at all, then you might consider something that is sensitive to the site in question. For instance, you might say that the square footage cannot exceed that of the principal dwelling, or the footprint cannot exceed that of the principal dwelling, or the height, or something of that nature, because I think that the intention here is simply that ADU shall not become the dominant structure. structure on the site.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Commissioner Chester.
Sure.
Just real, well...
Go ahead.
I was just, I was just going to respond to Alderman Petty real fast about the, I'd hate to tie this to the main dwelling, because I think that in a lot of cases, I know my lot where I live in South Fayetteville is kind of an example of this. A lot of times, people do these accessory dwellings for the very fact that their current dwelling is really, in most ways, insufficient. So it's, you know, it's a one story, you know, my house happens to be seven hundred and fifty square feet. I mean, so I think that it would be a mistake to tie it to that initial dwelling when, as I said, usually those happen to be really small, and that's what is necessitating the project in the first place. Sorry. Mr. Chester.
You can't recognize me. She has to.
Madam Chair. I'm just teasing.
Commissioner Chester, I recognize you.
What I was going to say is, we typically allow accessory units to be half the square footage of the principal, which I think might be reasonable here, although, given Commissioner Hoskins, Hoffman's, sorry, sorry. Given Commissioner Hof, you guys agree so much now, I can't keep you straight anymore. Given Commissioner Hoffman's comments, I have a question for, I guess, Andrew, which is, how do we determine what the principal dwelling unit is? So, for example, given Commissioner Hoffman's example of his seven hundred and fifty square foot house, but I happen to know he has quite a deep lot. If he were to want to build a fifteen hundred square foot house back in the back of that lot, and then call his existing current house his accessory dwelling unit, what is to stop him from that? I mean, what, is there something that would specifically stop him?
Yeah.
Just being there first?
Well, I'm not sure if I, right now, under the zoning code, you can build, he could build an accessory dwelling unit on his property, you know, which would be the six hundred square foot. And that's accessory to the principal structure. And so the intent, under the zoning code, if his zoning is neighborhood conservation, it's to allow single family dwellings only as a use by right. If you put, and there's a density under the zoning code, and there's an anticipated impact on the neighborhood, so if you allowed two full dwellings on that lot, it would just not even be under the zoning code. You would need to probably classify that as a two family lot or something like that. So that's the general intent of this whole regulation, was really to allow increased density while balancing neighborhood protection and compatibility with the neighborhood. So we, it came about in particular because there was one, these used to always be required as a conditional use permit. It was called the grainy unit. And so there was one in the historic district that came before the planning commission. It was very, very controversial. Lots of neighbors came out and said, hey, we don't want this big of a structure right next to my house, things like that. And so after that one, there was a...
And went to the city council.
Yeah, went to the city council, was denied, I believe.
I think so.
And that, that's where this ordinance came about, is we wanted to increase the density, but not at the detriment of the character of the neighborhood and concerns for the citizens around town that have, had come out against some accessory dwelling units. And you can imagine, in some instances, it would not be appropriate to have a really large second dwelling essentially in your backyard. And so that's why we put these standards in here, albeit they are pretty conservative. So that's why we're loosening some of it up today, or we're proposing to loosen it up somewhat today. But we don't want to, I would just urge you not to just throw out, you know, all of this. And we are trying to protect the neighborhoods here and allow density in a compatible manner. So that's, that's one of the things to be thinking about is, when you're considering these changes.
So, I guess, and that, thank you for that. I guess what I would propose is, while I agree in general that the current square footage and things like that are a little too constrictive, I would prefer not to hash it all out here tonight. So what I would like to do is ask if we could potentially table this, maybe people could throw some comments out as to what they might support. And I certainly would support potentially more than six hundred square feet. I kind of liked the idea of, I mean, I immediately did the calculation of, well, how big is a garage? And what do you even do if you're trying to put an accessory dwelling unit on top of a garage whose footprint is larger than six hundred feet? Like, you have to have roof everywhere. What do you do with the extra space? How does that work? So I like the idea of it being larger potentially, and I like the idea that there could be more bedrooms. I'm not sure that this body is the proper body to necessarily make all that, make all those edits tonight. What I would prefer is...
Maybe not tonight, but this is certainly the body to make recommendations through the city council.
Sure.
As opposed to the earlier one, where we were talking about commercial design standards. The public was not notified that, that the city council, I mean, the planning commission might consider changes to that. And that's one reason I had a question about it, because there was no notice to the public that you were going to make recommended changes. All of these comments are going to go to the city council eventually, not just one council member, but everybody is going to see those. And I would ask the applicant, though, if there's a time crunch, or if you want to give them some time, because I think this body is a good body to look at all of those issues, keeping in mind what the city planner has told you, because I was there listening to those debates and listening to the neighbors. So that must be considered also, even though I think you've made a lot of good points here, and this is a good place to, here and at the agenda session, is a good place to discuss these issues.
Well, just to make clear, I wasn't saying that, because I agree with your earlier comments. I'm just teasing you, I'm sorry. I'm just saying that I don't know that, right now, is the place to hash everything out. And if there's not a time crunch, I would prefer to see a more complete proposal put forth that we could then discuss, sort of, does that make sense? And I would love to hear from Alderman Petty, if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Uh, yes. Mr. Petty?
Yes, I think that's, that makes plenty of sense. What I would ask, though, is that you submit your comments and suggestions to Andrew, so that we don't have to make amendments in a vacuum. And I would also add that I will be very hesitant to sponsor this at the city council level if your suggestions, if staff withdraws their support in light of your suggestions, you know. So I think that we do not have to be ideological about this. We should come up with something that is rational.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoffman.
In light of Alderman Petty's comments, it sounds like city planner, Mr. Garner, it sounds like you would not be in favor of just eliminating paragraph number one. It sounds like you wouldn't support that.
Correct. I mean, I've, I've seen too many things go south.
Sure.
And I really like the idea of opening up the flexibility, but if you have one project that turns out really bad, and then you end up, the council may strike the whole ordinance, or it's just a bad name for density. So I think we do need to have some caution when we look at these. But I'm open, certainly open to just some other changes.
Let me just, let me just throw out my suggestion. I kind of mentioned this a minute ago, but just to be clear, I think that one way to approach this is to say that, okay, if six hundred square feet, you know, let's say that you've got just a blank backyard, no garage, nothing, and if we're saying that you can go in and do six hundred square feet as an accessory dwelling unit, and then we're also saying that if you happen to have a garage back there, that you can put six hundred feet on top of that garage, I think in terms of bulk and area and everything that surrounding neighbors should care about, you ought to be able to just say, okay, you can build a six hundred square feet footprint building that is however many stories to comply with the underlying zoning.
The issue that was before the city council that time was, in fact, I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, my memory is wrong, I thought it was a garage with, with an apartment on top, and the height of it was, was one of the things that the neighbors were very much objected to. Were you on the council then, Kyle?
Yep.
What do you, what do you remember about it?
That's what I remember, is the existing garage, and they wanted to build on top of it and rebuild the garage, basically. And gathered several of the neighbors, I think we went through a few reading that one, if I remember right. So I will also say that Fayetteville's a little different now than it was then, definitely.
That's true.
I will also say it's not a vote I was proud of, now that I look back on it, but we did deny them at that time. And then I think it kind of precipitated this ordinance coming around eventually, so...
Just, from my reading, it seems like we've kind of already crossed the bridge of allowing at least two story buildings, given the fact that you can stack, you know, the dwelling unit over the garage. So to me, you ought to be able to, within that same basic bulk area foot, you know, footprint, you ought to be able to just have a two story dwelling unit.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Here's some food for thought, for folks to be thinking about. You brought up bulk area regulations and what have you. The, uh, one of the things is, I don't think we ought to get too tied up in garages, in space over garages. There's a lot of people that like to have an ADU that's not over a garage. And so, and there's also a lot of people that like to have an ADU that's not two stories. And so we have, within the different zoning districts, we have, we already have height regulations, and we already have bulk area regulations where so much of the, of the lot has to be left unbuilt. So the fact is, is you can build a house here, okay, and then you can build an accessory dwelling unit, the same size of the house, as the house, on the same lot, as long as you don't go over the maximum building percentage on the lot, as long as you don't go over the height, as long as you attach it with a little bitty piece of roof, now it's one house. Okay? That's one of the ways of...
No.
Well, well, no, necessarily these ways.
Disagree.
Because if it doesn't have a kitchen in it, I mean, you might not put a kitchen in it, in a, in other words, I don't think that staff can tell us how to design a house, can you? If I have a house...
I do take exception to your comment that you could just build a totally, basically a total second dwelling and just attach it with a breezeway, and then it's considered one dwelling. That would, you can, that would be considered an attached accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Or a duplex.
Really? Even if it doesn't have a kitchen?
If you don't have a kitchen, it's not considered a dwelling unit.
Okay.
So if you just built a house with ten bedrooms, it's one house. But once you start adding in multiple kitchens and entrance points and exit points where you could, where it could function as a separate apartment, that's when it's, has to be classified as one.
So this is, is relative to accessory units that have a kitchen in it, then? Is that right?
Yeah, if it doesn't have a kitchen, it's not considered a dwelling, accessory dwelling unit at all.
Okay.
So if you wanted to add on, you know, ten bedrooms onto an existing house...
So is that in the code somewhere, the kitchen thing, though? Is that outlined in the code somewhere?
I think it's in the definition of a dwelling, where it talks about you have to have basically a place to sleep, a place, a bathroom, a full bathroom, and then a kitchen.
Okay, I didn't see that in the code. I'll look at it again. I apologize.
I don't think it's in this section of code.
Well, it's in the definition.
Yeah, it's buried somewhere else.
Okay. All right, I'll look that up. Anyway, so, that being said, again, a lot of people don't want to have a dwelling unit necessarily over a garage, and a lot of people don't necessarily have one that's two stories. I think as long as we stick to the bulk area regulations of the lot, or it's, this is something to consider. I don't know if this is even a good idea, it's just something to think about. But as long as we stay, stay with the bulk area regulations of the lot, and, of course, I would hate to see somebody build an accessory unit that was taller than the primary building, that would be kind of awful. Or, I mean, neighbors...
Unless you want to live there.
Well, that's right. I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about, I think that, whenever that came through in the city council thing, that was one of the issues, that, wasn't it tall, and people didn't like the fact?
It was tall. I don't think it was taller than the house. The house was a two story house.
Okay, was it?
And it was designed to look close to the other house, if I remember right. It was a pretty good project, unless you lived next door to it.
Yeah, it was a terrible...
That was a bad vote for it.
Okay. Okay. Well, at least he saw the light, huh? Okay. So anyway, so I think that's something to think about. While I appreciate the six hundred foot footprint and then six hundred feet on top, whatever, I don't, I think that still stifles design, so, but it's just my opinion. Anyway, something to think about.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Seeing that the applicant is in no hurry and has asked that comments be submitted in writing, and all these comments, I think, would be well submitted in writing, I move that we table administrative item sixteen dash five three four zero until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to table this item made by Commissioner Chester, a second by Commissioner Autry. Mr. Garner, would you please call the roll?
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Petty. That is our last item, except we have, we have, we're getting ready to elect new officers, and so I announce the, Andrew, do I announce the...
Yeah. Yeah, we need you to announce who's on the nominating committee, and then I'll announce the date for the meeting.
Okay, you'll do that, okay, because I don't remember when that is.
Yeah.
So we're, our nominating committee for the next year is, for officers for the next year, is Commissioner Chester, Commissioner Autry, and Commissioner Selby.
And their meeting is...
Their meeting is after the agenda session on March the tenth. So if you guys cannot make that, let me know, we'll have, we can reschedule where it would work. But agenda session, March tenth, is at four thirty, and then we'll just meet directly after that meeting. I actually will not be here, but Quinn Thompson will be here, and he'll, he'll be there to help walk you through how to formulate the slate of officers for the ballot that will be at the end of March.
And that was March...
March the tenth, agenda session. And then we'll have the nominating committee directly following agenda.
Okay. Do you have any other announcements?
I do have one other announcement. I emailed the commission an alternative location for our meetings in March, when this room is being renovated. And so we will be meeting at the Washington County Courthouse, the quorum, courtroom, at the March fourteenth Planning Commission, and also at the March twenty eighth Planning Commission. And so I sent that to you via email, so hopefully it's the courthouse on the corner of Dixon and College.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And I guess that's it, and we're, we're adjourned.